It appears we might be having some technical difficulties.
I think we've got it now, Mayor. Give us one more minute, please. Okay, we are ready.
Okay, this is Mayor Finkeldieh. Welcome to the March 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Lawrence Commission. We'll start the meeting by having Porter O'Neil, our Communications Director, give us a few opening comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. I just have a few housekeeping items for this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel. The public chat function is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. When you are not participating in the meeting, please mute your microphone. When you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are not participating in the meeting, you may turn your video off. You will still be able to hear the meeting, and you can turn your video back on when you are participating. Turning your video off when you are not participating allows the active meeting participants to be seen on the screen. If you have any trouble, please send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute microphones and/or turn off people's video to minimize distractions. Please remember to state your name every time you speak for the benefit of those listening remotely. And now I'll turn it back to Mayor Finkeldieh.
Mayor Finkeldieh, thank you. Porter, I'll now take roll call. Vice Mayor Shipley.
Here.
Commissioner Honanda.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Bowley.
Here.
Mayor Finkeldieh, present as well. Now, before we continue on with the meeting, we'll have our city clerk, Sherry Reedeman, give us some procedures for the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to provide a few procedural reminders for the virtual meeting. Commissioners, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. Mayor, after a motion is made and seconded, please call on commissioners individually to provide their vote, then announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. City staff, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. When the mayor calls for public comment on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. The raise hand function may appear in different places on your Zoom menu depending on the device you are using and which version of Zoom you have. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name. Comments will be limited to three minutes. When the mayor calls for in-person public comment, individuals should raise their hand to indicate they wish to speak. Staff present will then direct you to the podium to speak, following social distancing and safety protocols. Please state your name before speaking, and comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Finkeldieh, thank you. Sherry, we'll now move to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Did any commissioner wish to make any changes to the agenda?
Commissioner Lawson moved to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Honanda, second.
Mayor Finkeldieh, there's a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Commissioner Honanda. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Honanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldieh, aye. The agenda is approved. The next matter on the agenda is our proclamations. And for this month, we have proclaimed Wednesday, March 17th, as the day of the City of Lawrence's 34th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. Is there anyone present who would like to make any comments before I read the proclamation? Seeing none, I'll jump right to the proclamation. Whereas, in 2021, the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee is celebrating its 34th year as an organization in Lawrence. And whereas, the parade committee encompasses four basic themes: to honor Irish Americans and their contributions to America; to celebrate the legend and spirit of St. Patrick through a fun, good old-fashioned parade; to promote an atmosphere of benevolence, friendship, and cooperation through the parade and other associated events; to support and exemplify the idea that charity and goodwill begins at home, benefiting your friends, neighbors, and the Lawrence community. And whereas, this year's parade will be dedicated to the founders of the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee: Bill Sullivan, Mike Rebich, Wes Kable, Mike Jones, Mike Wilson, and Jean Shaughnessy. In memory of the founder Jean Shaughnessy, who was a Navy veteran and served upon the USS aircraft carrier Coral C and the missile destroyer USS King. He married Nancy K. Colburn in 1972. Jean was chief building inspector in Lawrence for 23 years, from 1973 to 2001. He served as president of the International Conference of Building Officials, and in 2019 was inducted into the ICBO Hall of Fame. Jean served the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Parade for 33 years. And whereas, the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Committee is self-supporting and depends solely on the resources of interested businesses and citizens who donate their time, talents, and good humor to sponsor worthwhile charitable causes on a yearly basis, now therefore I, Brad Finkeldieh, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 17th, 2021, for the day of the City of Lawrence's 34th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, and thank the citizens of Lawrence for supporting the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee's charity fundraisers during the months of February and March. I do think there might be someone to comment on that, and I thank the committee, but Ms. Reese, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you. My name is Alicia Reese. I'm the co-chair of the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. And on behalf of our committee, we just want to thank the City of Lawrence for all that you guys do for us, as well as the city for coming out every year and participating, and even though this year is a little bit different, we really hope that everyone can enjoy our reverse parade this year and, you know, drive by and see the local businesses and places on our map that we have decorated for our parade day and on. So, thank you for supporting the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day and all the charities that we benefit as well.
Mayor Finkeldieh, thank you so much for your whole committee and all the work you do, not only for the parade itself, which of course will be different this year, but all the events you have and all those charities you support. You're a very important part of our community, so thank you and your entire committee.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now moving to the consent agenda. All matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wanting to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any items a city commissioner would like to pull off the consent agenda?
Commissioner Lawson, I'd like to pull C-7B.
Any others by commissioners? This is Mayor Finkeldieh, I guess I should say. If any member of the public would like to pull a matter off the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand and using the raise your hand feature, or letting Sherry know if you're in the city commission room.
Chris Flowers, please unmute and state the item you would like to have pulled.
Yeah, this is Chris Flowers. I was just making sure I had the right one. I think it was pulled, but the one about the requirement for some city employees to live in town, I think it was C-7B, but if it's also A, just in case.
Mayor Finkeldieh, I believe that's the one that's been pulled, right, Commissioner Lawson? Yes.
Mayor, that's the only person that's indicated they want to pull an item. Well, I guess, sorry, we do have someone here in the commission room. Did you have an item on the consent you would like to have pulled for comment?
I think just public comment.
Okay. So, no? Okay. That's it?
Okay. Mayor Finkeldieh, thank you. Is there a motion on the remaining consent items?
Commissioner Honanda, I would move to approve the consent agenda, accepting item C-7B.
Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkeldieh, there's a motion by Commissioner Honanda, a second by Vice Mayor Shipley. Commissioner Honanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldieh, aye. Passes five to zero. We'll now take up C-7B, which was the residency requirement resolution. And Commissioner Lawson, you pulled that, you can begin.
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, thank you very much. I would just like to ask staff to kind of walk through their reasoning behind wanting to enact this or change this ordinance.
Good evening. This is Casey Tumi. I'm an Assistant City Manager, and I'm happy to do that for you this evening, Commissioner Larson. The item that we brought is actually related to two different code provisions. One is Section 1-302 of our code, and the other is Section-1405. Under Section-1-405, there are a number of city employees that have a residency requirement. There are the city manager, assistant city managers, and all department directors. That code provision then goes on to specifically name some of the different department directors. We have several recruitments coming up for some department directors. In addition, we've been having conversations with our compensation consultant, and in an effort to always continue to try to be market competitive, wanted to look at different requirements for city employees. So, we looked at that one. We pulled out a report that we had provided to the commission back at the end of 2018, where our Human Resources Director, Lori Carnahan, had looked at this issue. And she actually conducted an analysis of our existing workforce at that time, and found that while most of our city employees are not subject to a residency requirement currently, the majority of them do live within the city, if not Douglas County. So, based on that, based on some studies that Ms. Carnahan also was able to review, that revealed that residency requirements like this can be in hindrance for recruiting, and in light of our strategic planning framework, the commitments to equity and inclusion, and our commitments to engaged and empowered teams, our management team reviewed this, excuse me, our executive team, and in the end, we decided that we would forward a recommendation to all of you to remove that requirement. Do want to make the distinction that when we were looking at the code, there was a conflict discovered in some of the code language. And so, that other section of the code, Section 1-302, pertains to the city manager. And so, our recommendation is that the city manager would continue to have a residency requirement. So, I hopefully answered your questions. If you have anything else, I'd be happy to take a shot at answering that as well.
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, thank you for walking through that. I really appreciate it. I did a question on the equity inclusion part of the memo that was written. The indication here, the way it's written, is that it can place a burden on some people who might not be able to have access to the cultural resources. Do we have any information that that's happened?
I can maybe speak to that. I think the way we articulated that was based on the GARE Equity Toolkit. That toolkit talks about who's burdened by things and who benefits from them. And as we look at our community, there are cultural resources that are not available here locally, whether they're, you know, any number of different things. They may be available regionally. And so, if you are somebody who needs to access some of those resources, and they're not available here locally, those are the folks who would be burdened by this residency requirement. So, I think that was what we were trying to articulate. You know, I have maybe anecdotal evidence of things that have happened, but I don't have any scientific data to share with you tonight.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. I'm Casey. I don't have any more questions.
Mayor Finkeldieh, other questions from commissioners? I would just ask, this, of course, I think the answer to this question is yes, but nothing would keep us, even if it's not in the ordinance, if there was a particular position that we decided we wanted to either have residency preferred or residency required and put that in the job, you know, application process, we wouldn't have to change the ordinance to do that, would we?
Casey Tumi, Assistant City Manager, that is correct, Mayor. My understanding is that that is correct, and Randy's on the call. I know he could correct me if that's not right. But we do have some positions that are not called out in our existing ordinance that because of the nature of the emergency response that they do, they are expected to live within a certain response radius. So, if they have to respond to a water main break, for example, that they're able to do that within a certain allotment of time. So, we do have positions like that throughout the organization. And so, I think that that is a different tool that we can use to get at what you're talking about.
And this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. I would concur with what Casey has said. That's absolutely true. We can make that a requirement of a particular position or a particular job within the city.
Mayor Finkeldieh, that's what I thought. And I do like the response radius. I mean, there's certainly a, you know, there's some folks on the, you know, maybe if you live in the southern part of the county, your response time would be a lot longer than it would be if you lived just over the, you know, the county line up by the airport. You know, you could get in a lot faster. So, response time, to me, is a good way to look at that. But more comments in a minute. Let me go ahead and open it up to public comment before bringing it back to the commission. If this is an item you would like to make comment on, and I know Mr. Flowers is one, but others, if you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, or let Sherry know, either by turning your camera on and waving, or letting her know if you're in the city commission room. And Sherry will call upon you.
Chris Flowers, please unmute. State your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I was just wondering if we could do a thing where people sign if they're willing to live here, and then that can be used as, I mean, it wouldn't be necessarily a requirement, but if there's two, if it comes down to two people, then it would give the edge to the person willing to live here. Like, maybe they could sign something intending to live here if they get the gem. And just because my concern is if we're doing this for diversity, wouldn't it be more helpful to the minorities in Douglas County if we're filling the positions with Douglas County minorities? I think that should be, I think we should be trying to do that. So, I would like, I would just like to see us trying to get people to live here, and maybe trying to see if we can get them to sign something saying they intend to before we make the decision. And also, what about the tax dollars being lost if they go and live in another county? I'm okay with not making them live in Lawrence, but I mean, they should, because what if they want to live in the county, you know? Like, they don't want, they want more rural living than a city. But I mean, I think there should be kind of, we should be trying to get them to stay in Douglas County. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. I also sent in a thing, so it's kind of covered in what I sent in for correspondence, but thank you.
Adam Luke, please unmute. State your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Adam Luke. I just wanted to talk really quickly. I really understand the need for diversity, and I support your search for a large field of applicants. I don't think this is a great way to go about it. I think the loss for community investment would be pretty big, because it would start with one or two people that you want in, but then eventually you've got 11 high positions that don't live in town and aren't impacted by their decisions and by the way they do their job. And then, like, everyone else is going to say, their salaries are going to go to other communities. So, I think also what it says is you've got qualified applicants who want the job, but it sounds like Lawrence isn't suitable, a suitable place to live. It's a fine place to work, but it's not, like, you're not interested in being our neighbor, but you're interested in governing us, which I'm not sure what cultural things were missing. I don't know if it's medical or if it's religious, but I would love all those things to be brought here. And if somebody needs something, I think we should bring that here so that they can be here. I think we should invest in the people that have either lived here before or live here now, to try to fill these positions too. Anyway, I understand your position, but I just think the loss community-wise would be pretty big. And people living in privilege and then just coming in just feels kind of gross and inappropriate. I think we should work towards making Lawrence a place people want to be, you know, not because they're getting paid, but because it's an interesting place to be, full of a community. I think that's all I can say. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
If there's anyone else who would like to provide public comment on this item, please indicate so by either turning on your video and raising your hand, or using the raise hand feature. Mayor, it looks like that's all the comment on this item.
Mayor Finkeldieh, thank you. We will bring it back to the commission for comments, discussion.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Larson, and I appreciate what staff is trying to do regarding giving all of our employees an opportunity to live where they want to live, and look at the aspect of the cultural resources that may or may not be here. I still have a problem with the idea of striking this from the ordinance or changing the ordinance. So, because I think it is important that there are certain positions that should, that the director should live in Lawrence, and one I think of is a police chief, because I think it's vital that they become immersed in our community, and there's no better way to do that than to live here. And all of our public safety directors, such as a fire chief. So, I'm going to vote against this, because I just think it's too important that we have certain positions that have to live in Lawrence. And even if you change the ordinance and had them sign something at the time that they hire, that seems a little, that just doesn't seem right to me, because it's not in a way that's right. So, anyway, I'm just going to vote against this.
Vice Mayor Shipley, one thing I want to bring up that staff hasn't exactly specified is the very real situation that we have with our housing market, and how frankly difficult it is to find a place in a timely manner when you want to move to Lawrence. And I think we have a employee right now that is having a very hard time finding something not complicated, something you could easily find 30 miles in any direction, but owing to the realities of our housing market, has found it very difficult. So, I just, that wasn't specifically enumerated, but I do want to bring that up. Just, I think we need to acknowledge that.
Mayor Finkeldieh, you know, I agree. I mean, I don't disagree with the comments, you know, of Mr. Luke or Commissioner Lawson here on, I mean, this is an issue that every city and every county, you know, they work with and think about, and there's a lot of different solutions to it. You know, I do think it's pretty nuanced. I mean, the police chief is, you know, probably a good example of one that more people would say would want to live here. But I think we can handle that through that process. You know, example, a director of IT, you know, director of HR, if we have this requirement, and we don't even get people to apply, we don't know what we've missed. But if it ends up that the best candidate is someone that, you know, lives in Lenexa and has a sophomore in high school, and doesn't want to move here because their kid has two more years of high school and doesn't want to move them, and we settle for the second choice because of that reason, I think we've missed out and done a disservice to our community. Do I hope they live here? Yes. Do I expect many of them to? Yes. I mean, one of my, you know, I've talked to lots of people, Hills, Pat, Evergy, you know, there's a lot of, I've, some acquaintances who work at Hills, Pets, and when they come in to interview, they first go and see the office, and then they drive them to Lawrence to look at housing, because they don't, they're not trying to sell them into Pica. But others that, you know, so we get a lot of people who live here and commute to Pica and Johnson County, so I think it's a good place to live. And I think we'll eventually get folks here, but I want to get some of the best candidates for the job. And so, I think not having that requirement in the upfront application gives us the best shot for that. And then, we do all we can to get them to move here. That's my thought process on this. Certainly, I understand the other opinions, and I understand where others come from, and why, you know, we've had this for a long time, and why other cities have it. But I feel comfortable making that change, so we can get the best candidates in for these positions. Other comments? Motions?
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'm going to agree with you, Mayor. There's another situation I think we need to consider, and that is where someone who may be living in Salem, Exa, and their partner works in Lee Summit, and they'd be an excellent candidate for a job in Lawrence. And, you know, it's just, I think we need to be open to the, to the idea that people can come and work for us and do a wonderful job, and, you know, be a part of the community, but not live here. And, you know, I'd also like to layer on the idea that this has come to us from GARE, and I think we need to be, you know, open to that. And also, you know, we have a relatively new city manager. I think it's important for us to be open to some of the ideas that, you know, he has bring to us and the management team has bring to us.
This is Commissioner Honanda. I would move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 9835.
This is Commissioner Bowley, second.
Mayor Finkeldieh, there's a motion by Commissioner Honanda, a second by Commissioner Bowley. Commissioner Honanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Nay.
Mayor Finkeldieh, aye. Passes four to one with Commissioner Lawson in the negative. Thank you for that. We're now moving on to public comment. The public is allowed to speak to any items or issues except those scheduled on the consent agenda or the regular agenda portions of the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. If you're interested in speaking in general public comment, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, or turn on your camera and wave, or if you're in present, let Sherry know, and Sherry will call on you.
Chad Ausdale, please unmute. State your name. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me? I'm hoping we get this right.
We can hear you, Chad.
Okay. I, first of all, the same thing I asked in my email to you, if we could put Resolution 3746 on the agenda to discuss, please. Other than that, I didn't hear a response last time when you told me when you told me that, uh, the commissioners were satisfied with the answers that Craig had given. Uh, and I just wanted to hear you say, yes, you're satisfied with, uh, performance appraisal that, uh, the employees have absolutely no positive influence on. The only influence that they have is a negative influence on their merit scores or merit raises. And, uh, the, uh, fact that the performance appraisal doesn't even follow its, uh, principal objective of the appraisal, but you guys are fine with that. I'd just like you to say, yes, we're fine with all of that in public and on the record. I've been told this many times off the record, but, uh, it's just me asking again, uh, you know, you, uh, saying your new procedure, your new resolution that, uh, giving special consideration to one group of employees and not another is a violation of your ethics policy. And my department is normalized using the two method, meaning you can't score above a two, and that's why you have no influence on your raise or your merit score. And at the same time, the next department is normalized using the three method. And as far as I can tell, that's denying everybody in my department, uh, the considerations that you're giving the next department, allowing them to score threes. And you're denying that department access to the same scores that the next department is normalized at as four and allowed to score anywhere, but you don't want to discuss this in public. Uh, you're putting through some resolution to, uh, investigate ethics complaints. Find that hard to believe, but beside the point, I'd like to get this, uh, investigating process, uh, started and actually have somebody I can talk to, others than the people that are denying us our rights. I don't know. I don't want to pitch and bitch, but you all have a nice evening. Thanks for listening. Good evening.
Chris Flowers, please unmute. State your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I've been thinking more about the speed enforcement campaign that's been going on as far as the 25 mile per hour speed reduction. Here's what I don't understand. I go to the HRC asking them to look at a couple of ordinances. HRC puts it on the agenda and then city staff recommends to them that they wait for the results of the outside police review before making any changes. The police review board wants to strengthen its oversight of police. And then the DA comes in and tells them to wait for the outside police review to be completed. When it comes to the eight can't wait, it seems like we're waiting on that until the outside police review is completed. So how come when staff coming up with this new 25 mile per hour plan, wanting to implement a law enforcement campaign as part of that plan, there was no, let's wait and, and see until the outside police review is done? Seriously, isn't there just as much of a chance of this outside police review recommending against speed enforcement campaigns as there is of the police review saying, we need the ordinances that I want to do away with? It's just strange that when it comes to changes that activists want, the city's response is we need to wait until the police review is done. But when it comes to the changes the city traffic staff wants, the city doesn't need to wait for any reviews before having cops start targeting motorists for tickets. I see this as two possibilities. One, city staff have just been using the police review as an excuse to delay change as long as possible. Or two, the city staff in charge of reducing the speed limit didn't bother checking with the right people about whether or not they should wait for the police review before implementing a new law enforcement campaign. Did they ask the cops, should we do this? Or did they just ask them, can we do this? It doesn't add up that while the rest of city staff and even the DA's office was telling people to wait for the outside police review before doing anything new involving law enforcement, those in charge of our streets were the only ones going ahead with their own agenda and ignoring the outside review. Is this just one more example of those in charge of our streets being subpar and lacking common sense when compared to the rest of city staff? If I was a commissioner who re- who really cared about reform, I'd be looking more into this. Uh, and just want to say thank you.
Michael Davidson, please unmute. State your name. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is Michael Davidson, Executive Director of Explore Lawrence. Uh, I come before you tonight seeking help and seeking help for the lodging industry. We had great hopes that when the county went into green phase, that we'd be allowed to host youth sporting events. Unfortunately, that has not happened. Uh, the recommendations, guidelines are too restrictive to allow a sports event planner, a sports, a event planner to bring a, a group here, uh, bring his event here because there's so many obstacles. In a, in the document that was dated, uh, originally it was, came out, I think in September 15th. It was updated a number of times. It talks about that the county can restrict sporting events with counties over a certain positivity rate. I think the rate they're talking about is 5%. I don't know how you even manage that. I don't know how, uh, a, an event organizer could provide that information in the, in a meaningful way to, uh, to Parks and Rec, to allow them to say an event can happen. Uh, with these restrictions that are still on, events are just leaving Lawrence. We lost March. We had four weekends of volleyball in March. They're not happening. April is gonna be basketball. It's gonna be some volleyball. There's gonna be some outdoor, uh, softball and baseball events. We need your help to make, get these events happening. Event planners are planning things out. They're unsure of Lawrence. They are concerned that they're gonna get the rug pulled out for them days before their event is, is scheduled to start. So we need you as elected officials to help get this to the next point. It seems like events are really only gonna happen after we go out of phases. And I don't see in the near future the city going out of green phase. It's just not gonna happen. But we need your help. It's, we've lost millions and millions of dollars in all these events that have been canceled. We want your help to get these events up. I think minimally, we should be able to say all outdoor events should be approved moving forward. And again, that's gonna be events April, May, June and, and forward. So just seeking your help, anything you do, it's just, we're just desperate. I mean, you know, it has just been a horrible year for the lodging industry. We were hoping it was gonna improve in the first quarter. It does not appear. But again, youth sporting events are, is our lifeline. And I appeal for you to help figure out how we can get these events moving. So thank you very much.
Is there anyone else, um, participating via Zoom that would like to make public comment? Mayor, there is not, but we do have one individual here in the commission room who would like to make comment.
Three minutes. Okay. Can you just come right here and speak right in that microphone?
I'm costing, uh, in concert to waters to unplug them. But my, my in this side, I, I cost them.
Can you state your name?
My company. My con, in this stand. In gas, in gas start to. Of course, any, my, in the tendency in saying, counting on all of the problems concerning to the E. I can't, I can't, I can't, can't understand to a lot my present, presence in my. What's, what's turned?
I haven't started it because I don't
What I have to say?
Can you, um, speak here and do you wanna?
Mayor, are you able to hear?
And just
And the comment?
And then explain what you wanted to speak about?
Okay.
Told me earlier.
Okay. My, over here, over here?
Yeah, you can just speak right there.
Okay.
And speak up so they can hear you and you can see them in the screen there, sir.
Okay. Can I? In this, in, in this stand to what I said, could, with reference to, uh, I, for instance, in a, what I said beside what I said to, to my, can, can, can. I, yeah. I, I, in the problem to, in, in this, what? To connect to what I have spent then, what would I spend, spend? Con, conspiracy. I'm sorry.
If you'd like, I can convey what you told me earlier to Yeah. Later.
Yeah.
Work for you?
Yeah, yeah.
But I gave you that information.
Right. I, 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 what I said, what I said to you, um, can, 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 can.
I remember it was about the video with Bill Gates.
Yeah.
And then the information about your pipes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the ass, ass, ass.
And I can share that with them through another time.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay, can I, can I, can I do that when I, yes. Yes, do that with it.
I think for now, if you're done, then I can share this information that you shared with me earlier.
Would, would you, would you do that for me? Yeah. And would you come, come, um, would, would hold, hold me out with, um, possibility to just, to see all of the things that, you know, for some reason I have, I have on the, uh.
If you're agreeable, I think for now, I can, I can speak with you outside.
Right.
And then they can continue the meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then I can take more information from you.
Okay.
When you get contact information?
Porto, yeah. Thank you, Porto.
Yes.
Any other public comment?
Uh, no, mayor.
Mayor Finkley, thank you. Now we're moving on then to regular agenda item number one, which is consider directing staff to include the, in the quarterly budget adjustment, an increase in the 2021 expenditures. And, um, I'm not sure who's taking this one.
The city manager, Craig Owens. I'm gonna lead off with a few comments and then toss it over to, uh, Assistant City Manager, um, Casey Tume. Um, this, this is a, a initiative that's one of the follow-ups to what I talked about as our, as we adopted our placeholder budget. Um, there are some, there are some pieces of what we're, um, what we're working on to respond to our new, um, strategic plan. And as we continue to develop and put, um, detail into that plan, uh, one of the, the features of the framework, as you know, but as a reminder, has commitments, commitments that we're making on how we do our work, which, uh, the work is the outcome. So what are we delivering to the community and how we're delivering that is a very important thing in the framework that we've adopted. And as we've developed those priorities and we start to build plans out and we'll be bringing to you some key performance indicators, this is kind of a next step of that. It became very obvious to us that this is a, um, it's an ambitious, uh, and heavy lift that we are committed to the way we do our work. And so we very quickly understood that if we're going to continue on this path and start to build capacity to deliver not just the things that the community has asked us to lit, to deliver through the, uh, framework and the strategic plan and the listening that we did, we also know that it's important how we do, the work is properly resourced. Um, as, I'll still claim new, newish city manager. Um, I, uh, have observed that we've had, been very decentralized as an operation. And that's, um, to some extent, I, I believe that that's happened as an evolutionary thing without a lot of intent. Um, and it's, it's happened over decades. Um, if we're going to be successful in fulfilling these commitments, we're going to need to grow some capacity. So what I present to you, um, and, and we worked as a team to try and pull together, are steps to take us to a, a level of reliable performance in key areas that support everything we do. And Casey's gonna take you through those and hopefully it was clear in the plans that we developed. But, um, we believe that we need to take these first initial steps as we continue to develop out the plan so that we can do that work that's ahead of us. And these are things that I think are so clearly needed for us to take those steps that we present them, uh, at this earlier stage. We don't believe that these can wait. And in some instances, I, I really do believe that these are setting us up to the level of performance that many think we already are at. And that's, that's, um, that's important that we are fulfilling even that level of service expectation uh, that people think we're already at, and we probably don't have capacity to really say that we're doing. And so Casey's gonna give you some examples through there. And, um, we're really, um, excited to present this. This takes us to that, the first step to take us affirmatively to that next level and to take on this ambitious work that we've, we've developed with you and with the community, uh, to do. So I'll toss it over to Casey and then I really look forward to the discussion.
Thanks, Craig. This is Casey Tume, Assistant City Manager. And I'm going to attempt to share my screen, to share her PowerPoint. Is everybody able to see the PowerPoint? I think I see a nod. Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and get started and, um, there we go. Uh, so tonight we're gonna talk about, uh, the expenditures, as Craig mentioned, that we're recommending to include in our quarterly adjustment to the 2021 budget. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about some of the background. Craig did a really nice job, so I won't spend a lot of time there. I kind of go at a high level through our recommended expenditure increases. Um, given our, uh, Zoom forum tonight, um, our department directors could do that, but instead of sharing screens and, and doing all that, I'm gonna do it. Uh, they are on the call though, and I'm sure when we get to questions, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, talk a little bit about those expenditures that are related to those commitments that Craig talked Talk a little bit about those expenditures that are related to those commitments that Craig talked about and then also present an alternative option that also addresses a recent commission priority and then talks about the budget adjustment process itself and the fiscal impact of what we're proposing here tonight. So again, Craig mentioned back in 20, or back in August of last year, we adopted a budget that really was serving as a placeholder and we anticipated a quarterly budget adjustment process and you all have already seen our first quarterly adjustment back in January. So this, similar to that, our, as again Craig mentioned, our framework did identify those outcomes and commitments and those KPIs and strategies are still under development. But I thought he did a nice job of articulating what we're talking about tonight are some of our really critical functions that are at risk and how we need to put some basic capacity in place. Evolved was a really good word, evolution to a decentralized model. For some of our administrative supports like budget and financial analysis, recruitment and HR related functions and information technology. The result of that evolution is we lack capacity in some of these areas, but also we have really inconsistent practices, policies and procedures. Before we go any further, I do want to make a point of saying that as we talk about this need for additional capacity, it is in no way meant to be a reflection on the staff that is currently in, that is currently in these, these areas for us. These are hardworking, dedicated people. They're talented and they show up every day and give it their all. These are, this is a systems problem that we're talking about and we're trying to address through a systems approach. So just, I would hate for anybody watching or, or hearing this to think that this is in any way a criticism of the work that, that these talented and dedicated folks are doing. So I do want to just stress that before we go forward. You'll see that in 2020, we were able to, to start to see some growth in this area. I think one major force there is our internal support fund, our administrative support fund. We created that fund in 2020 and that was a finance or accounting mechanism that gave us the ability to charge some of these administrative support costs out to the various operations. Prior to that, they were primarily funded from our city's general operating fund. And with primary, with property tax and sales tax is the primary revenue source supporting these costs. That internal support fund has given us the ability to spread those costs out across all of our operating funds and those are all supported by any number of different revenue sources. Now, despite that growth, I think this, this chart shows our kind of four major areas of administrative support, public information or communications, human resources, finance and information technology. You'll see that we have had some growth in recent years. But when you look at these positions and compare them to our total number of city employees, we're still as a percentage basis, pretty low in terms of the, the amount of administrative support for those more operational kind of tasks. So we, we visited as a team with our internal service departments and tried to identify the resources that they need to stabilize and secure these essential services. And they thought big. They gave us great proposals for what they need to, to really move into that aspirational space that our strategic framework has provided for us. But we worked really hard to refine that and focus first on securing that basic capacity that Craig mentioned. So maybe another way of putting that is that this isn't the end of the, of, of this work, but it really is a critical first step. As I mentioned, we're going to present an option that's related to those commitments, but we also, last November, the city commission had asked what it would take to increase capacity in the planning division of our planning and development services department. And so we wanted to provide an op, an alternative option that would address this priority and that could be included in our recommendation as well. So tonight, we'll talk a little bit about these expenditure increases needed in a quarterly budget adjustment for the strategic commitments related to community engagement, engaged and empowered teams, sound fiscal stewardship, efficient and effective processes and environmental sustainability. And then that alternative option I mentioned provides additional resources aimed at one of our outcome areas, strong welcoming neighborhoods. So just a quick summary of the requested action that we're asking for tonight is oh, sorry, in addition is authorizing those additional expenditures, but also revisions to our list of authorized full-time equivalent positions. So you'll notice in our adopted budget book, there's a list of our authorized full-time positions. And as we need revisions to that, we want to make sure we have the commission authority to do that as part of that quarterly budget adjustment process as well. So on to our commitment recommendations. So we'll go ahead and start with our community engagement. And we have some recent projects, whether it's our, the water tower or the dog park, that I think really point to a need for a new and improved approach to community engagement in our organization. We've identified several resources needed to create the foundation for this improvement. First, a community engagement coordinator. This position can coordinate efforts internally and provide our departments with a resource to turn to at the beginning of projects as they design the public engagement components that they, they want to use. And hopefully this will ensure a more consistent approach to community engagement across all of our departments. The position can not, not only serve as a resource to other departments, but they can also provide a hands-on approach to particularly challenging projects. Note, the dollar amount shown here is, and in most cases, is the salary and benefits for the position. And we recognize that the costs, given the calendar, are likely to be less in 2021. But we wanted to make sure that the city commission fully understood the impact of the, the cost of these positions for a full year, because we do hope that we're able to continue to support them past 2021. So wanted to give you that, the full year annualized cost there. So let's see. In addition to our community engagement coordinator, staff's recommending reclassifying a position to a brand manager. Similar to that community engagement coordinator, the concept behind this position is again, bringing a consistent approach to the city's message over any number of different platforms, be it press releases that go out every day or the city's social media presence. The dollar amount here shows the difference between the current salary. This is a reclassification. So this is the difference between the current salary of a marketing specialist position and a position that would be classified one grade higher in the city's pay plan. A, a media and creative specialist position is recommended. This is to provide additional capacity for all of our video production. As you know, COVID hit and we have gone to virtual meetings, not only for the city commission, but for our various boards and commissions as well. Right now, we rely on one FTE. Our friend Kurt, who provides this resource for our entire organization. If, this is a critical area where we need some, some redundancy. COVID has certainly brought an increased capacity and demand, but we do anticipate, as we talk about new ways of providing community engagement, that this need will continue even after COVID. Any questions about that one? I don't know if you want to stop and do questions now, or if not, we can keep on moving on to the next commitment area.
Commissioner Larson, I do have a question for you, Casey. The community engagement coordinator, would that be a position where say if neighborhoods needed to better understand projects or wanted to make sure that they are part of the, the process from day one? Would they contact a person like that or would they still go through planning or how would that work?
Assistant City Manager, I think I, I would say, and Porter is available to jump in here too. But that our, our, our initial thought is that this person could serve as a resource, but that primarily we would, and it reminds me, I didn't touch this last point on the slide. Ideally, we'll have trained folks throughout the organization in this new model of doing community engagement. And so while this person can be a resource, I think our vision is that, that we'll have, we'll have additional staff throughout the organization that are trained in kind of these new models. I don't know, Porter or Craig, if either of you want to weigh in or, or have anything that you might add.
The city manager Craig Owens, I believe every department should be prepared to give a great response to people that are asking for help and service. And if it's a level of detail, we should be adept and be prepared to level, to, to provide that level of service. A lot of people in this, in this organization are in, are, are, you know, underwater or in the weeds in some cases. And what this is going to help us do is elevate this as a fundamental way of doing business throughout our everything we do and every touch we have with anybody that we serve. That's what we're trying to do. And to, to build that kind of capacity and fulfill the commitment and the values that you've adopted for us on community engagement, we're going to need to do that. But just having these, these five or six people be responsive to every question that comes along and the wide breadth of things that we ask that we're trying to provide to this community, I think is ambitious. And I would prefer that instead we change the culture to one that is completely responsive wherever they are, where that doesn't already exist. It does exist in many, many places, but I think this is about capacity building and leveraging, which we really need to do.
Commissioner Larson, thank you.
This is Casey Tumey, Assistant City Manager. As I, as I mentioned, I neglected to point out that the last item on this slide is related to doing just that, providing some training throughout the organization. And the dollar amount here is the net new resources that are needed. We, we have identified some resources in the various operating departments to help get this training, but we didn't want, because it was an unanticipated expenditure, we wanted to make sure that we had resources to adequately train staff to kind of implement this new model that, that Craig articulated. Ready to move on to our next outcome area? Engaged and empowered teams is another one of our commitments. Ensuring accurate and timely payroll is critical to the success of our organization. And failure to do so can, can result in some expensive consequences. Not to mention the toll that it takes on the relationship between our managers and our employees. If employee, if employees can't trust that our payroll is consistently accurate and timely, the center, the city will never be able to meet our commitment to in this area, staff is recommending hiring some additional staff to provide capacity related to payroll production. First, a payroll manager is recommended to really be able to focus on compliance and oversee the work of the payroll division. Also, a payroll analyst is recommended to provide additional data analysis capabilities. Last year, our staff reported that the time and resources needed related to discussions and contract compliance increased with an increased number of recognized employee organizations exceed, would exceed the capacity of our existing staff. We're about to begin discussions with three groups simultaneously. So in order to provide in-house expertise related to the employer, employee relations, as well as some in-house expertise related to general employment law, staff is recommending hiring an additional attorney. I did want to point out that the, the, the vision here is for this position to report to and be part of our city attorney's office. But we did show it here because we think their work is vital to this commitment. Finally, it takes time to hire and train employees. And so the request here for some payroll consulting services. The department has had success using a firm that places skilled professional employees that are temporary employees before they add additional capacity. And so the, the amount shown here represents two of these temporary employees working 40 hours a week for 52 weeks. Again, we know based on the calendar that the, the amount here is possibly less. But because these positions are temporary, you know, we do have the flexibility to use them on an as-needed basis. Again, I'll stop for questions related to this particular outcome area.
Commissioner Larson, Casey, could you remind me how many payroll positions we have right now?
Pull up my table here. Oh, sorry, Casey Tumey, Assistant City Manager. The 2021 budget has nine positions associated with, with HR. Specific to payroll, we have two.
Two, two. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Larson. Again, on the payroll consulting services, is that going to be just a one-time, would that be just a one-time expense if approved?
Casey Tumey, Assistant City Manager. That is, that dollar amount is a one-time amount. We, we do have some backed up projects on the whiteboard as we've been, we've been talking in HR. So there, that is aimed at getting it, getting through the kind of backlog of whiteboard projects. We, it may be needed to do some continuation into 2022. We do have our new enter, enterprise resource planning ERP system coming forward and there are some, excuse me. There are tasks associated with implementing that that may need some additional temporary support. But we don't anticipate being that large of a dollar amount once we're able to get through some of those whiteboard items. And again, I might pause here and see if Lori Carnahan, our HR director, has anything additional that she might want to add.
Lori Carnahan, Human Resources Director. I think Casey has outlined the need pretty accurately. I do look for those payroll consulting services to get through the whiteboard, which is pretty, pretty large backlog. And I am anticipating when we make the purchase of the human capital management portion of the, of the enterprise system. They are calling for about two to three, depending on the vendor, FTEs for implementation alone. And as this proposal for full-time staff just covers what it's going to take to maintain our system, I'm, I'm anticipating some need for implementation assistance and that is, I think, projected probably to run in 21 and probably in 22. After that, I think we'll be caught up and we won't need it any longer. I also some of that, excuse me, to be part of our 2022 budget.
Thank you.
Casey Tumey, Assistant City Manager. We're ready to scroll on to our next commitment area, sound fiscal stewardship. And our, some continued findings from the city's financial auditors are an of the importance and necessity of hiring and retaining accountants by paying competitive wages and allowing those accountants to focus on accounting rather than rather than some of the purchasing related tasks that they've been doing. So to accomplish this, staff is recommending hiring a purchasing administrator who's certified in procurement. By competitively bidding more, we anticipate that over time our organization can get more accurate pricing and save time and money. But due to the volume, one purchasing administrator isn't enough for the organization. So we're also recommending a buyer to help assist that administrator. And these two positions, we anticipate will free up capacity of the accountants, but also employees in other departments that are spread out in our operations that spend time on purchasing related tasks. You'll also see staff is recommending some funding to provide additional compensation to our accountants. We want to make sure that we're offering market competitive wages to help us recruit, but also retain positions. We've seen some turnover in that position. And I think you all are aware of recent in recent years. And so we want to make sure that we are we are providing adequate compensation for those folks. And then finally, additional funds are shown here to, similar to what Ms. Carnahan talked about, for some contractual staff support during our audit preparation season. So wanted to include that here as part of our recommendation as well. I'll pause there for questions about any of the items related to sound fiscal stewardship.
Hey, Pinkle Die. This maybe goes back a little bit to the last one, but obviously, this is an area where we have decentralized purchasing and we want to move towards a centralized purchasing, which I think will will do a lot to save us money. Is payroll like that? Do, is payroll handled or parts of payroll handled at the department level and we're going to bring that all in-house? Or is that something we do all in-house now? We're just trying to increase our capacity?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager, I'll take a shot and then Lori and or Jeremy can can add on. A couple of years ago, we did kind of a review of our payroll process and made the decision to, it used to be split between finance and HR. And we made the decision to move all of the payroll, dedicated payroll employees into HR. Now, there are still responsibilities associated with payroll. You know, making sure that employee timesheets are filled out and and entered accurately in our our accounting, our our payroll system, our timekeeping system, excuse me. So some of that does still happen at the department level. But the the converting that in that that entry into what goes out in the form of paychecks is done with those two FTEs that are in HR. Lori and Jeremy, anything to add? I see Lori says no, I don't know if Jeremy has anything he would add. Okay.
Commissioner Larson, I have a question, Casey. Were you? If we follow through and get a purchasing administrator as well as a buyer so that we can centralize these processes, is there a possibility for some savings through position elimination through attrition or something like that in throughout the organization where where that work was being done in a decentralized manner?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager, again, I'll start and then Jeremy can chime in. I do want to be clear that these positions, even two of them, are not adequate to completely bring purchasing in-house for the organization. There are still going to be needed tasks that will will happen. This was to get some immediate relief to our accountants to allow them time to focus on their accounting tasks. And there are some anticipated tasks that can be pulled back from the operating departments. But I think for an organization our size, if we compare us to some of the other organizations that we've looked at, if we really wanted to centralize all of purchasing, it would require more than just the two positions that we're recommending. So while I don't necessarily know that attrition is is going to be an outcome, I do think that there are savings that can be anticipated just simply by being able to do more enterprise-wide kinds of purchases. And again, being able to use competitive bidding more and maybe rely on sole source or emergency purchases or things like that, that somebody, again, who has certification and more training in procurement and is part of those kind of procurement networks can provide a higher level of service and hopefully generate some savings in that way. Jeremy, you want to add anything?
Jeremy Willoughby, Finance Director, yes, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context, if I may. The while the these activities within the the city departments are decentralized, it's not a one-for-one relationship. In other words, there's not like a buyer in the MSO and and HR analysts in the MSO. What the MSO, with the fire department, what all of the operating departments have done over time is they've added administrative capacity. And a portion of that job is payroll, a portion of that job is purchasing card, excuse me, purchasing card reconciliation, a portion of that job is purchasing, et cetera. And so to your question, Commissioner Larson, I'm not exactly sure that there will be necessarily attrition, but what we're trying to do at the start of this with central is with with centralization is essentially providing a level of support to the departments that's centralized and then can help those people that are currently in those roles perform those tasks more efficiently rather than our current method, which is a portion of their time here, a portion of their time here. So over time, I think what you're going to see is pods, if you will, being centralized either in the departments or outside of the departments, but specializing in skill sets rather than sort of trying to be a master of all trades, if that makes sense. And so with purchasing in particular, the MSO is, you know, our largest consumer of product throughout the, you know, the street department, the utilities. And so we're focusing there first to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And then as we improve those processes, rolling that out to the rest of the organization. But as Casey had indicated, currently, we're asking the accountants essentially to be that backstop. And so when the requisition goes through, if it hasn't been caught, then essentially we have to do a lot of journal entries to move things to where they should have been originally. And so by centralizing that, we're going to have dedicated staff. And they're now going to be that gatekeeper so the accountants can monitor the rest of the the balance sheet and not spend so much of their time solely fixated on whether purchase orders were put in the right account, whether assets are being tracked properly at the requisition level, et cetera.
Mr. Larson, thank you, Jeremy and Casey.
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager, I think we're ready to move on to our next commitment area. And I just realized that I should probably stop sharing my screen when we get to questions. So I'll try to do that in the next time. Our next commitment area is efficient and effective processes. And before I go into these recommendations, I do want to correct and oversight on my part. In late part of last year, our Information Technology Director, James Wisdom, retired from the organization. And we asked Michael Aldridge to step in and serve as our interim Director of Information Technology. And Michael's on the call tonight, but pointed out that he hadn't ever officially been introduced to the commission. So I do want to correct that oversight and make sure to introduce Michael to you all. He, prior to serving as our interim director, was started as our cyber architect. And then, as we'll talk here in a minute, his position was merged or reclassified to become an assistant director. So he's been serving as an assistant director in our information technology department. Prior to working for the city, he worked as a chief information officer for Johnson County. And prior to that, has worked for Lawrence Memorial Hospital. So did want to acknowledge that and make sure to introduce you all to Michael. And as I said, when we get to the questions portion of this, I'll stop sharing my screen and and hopefully you'll be able to see Michael. So our recent Zoom bombing here at the city commission, as well as fraudulent unemployment claims at our state level, all point to the importance of a robust cybersecurity program. And in order to start to build out our program, we are recommending that we hire a cybersecurity manager. As I mentioned, we were asking Michael to do both, play the role of cybersecurity architect and assistant director. And the workload is just too much for one FTE. Both are critical needs in the department, so we are asking to hire a cybersecurity manager. Cybersecurity manager is also a higher classified position than the cybersecurity architect. Because the importance of this program, we need someone who's able to really lead the effort to build that program out in the organization. In addition, you'll see convert a help desk intern to an IT technician. The I, the information technology help desk provides technical support to all of our operations. And you all as commissioners as well. So right, we're trying to take what is an intern position now and convert that to a full-time position. So you'll see the cost differential there. And you'll also notice that it's a one FTE. So while it's not a new body to the organization, this is an example of how interns aren't typically included in our count of FTEs. So we wanted to make sure that we accounted for that properly. The final need here is converting an administrative support position from a part-time temporary position to one that is a part-time permanent position. And what that means basically is our part-time temporary positions are not eligible for benefits through the city, but part-time, excuse me, part-time permanent positions are. So you'll see here the cost differential of providing some of those employee benefits to that position. The thought by creating this as a part-time permanent position, the thought is that we're able to recruit and retain someone who's able able to take on even more administrative tasks. And similar to the conversation we just had about purchasing, shift some administrative work that's currently handled by our other IT staff, shift that to this administrative position, freeing up capacity in their prime, in those other primary functions of IT staff. So I'll stop there and stop sharing my screen and ask if there are questions about this particular area. Michael, I'll just also just cue this to where if you want to and give everybody a wave, you can do that, too. Kurt, did you zoom in on Michael for us? Okay, I'll go back to sharing my screen now. I don't see any questions. All right, and I appreciate your patience. We're we're almost through our commitments. This last commitment that we're going to talk about is environmental sustainability. Are we, the city and county currently jointly fund the position of Sustainability Director pursuant to an agreement signed back in 2009. Currently, the county pays 60% of that position and the city pays 40%. Given our increased commitment to sustainability through adoption of our strategic plan framework, as well as other recent commission activities, whether it's our energy goals or the adoption of those sustainability principles, it's important to recognize the additional workload related to sustainability on the city side of that position. It's also important to pay this position more in line with the pay that we offer to our other commitment area champions. So you'll see here dollars to bring that pay more in line with some of our other commitment champions. This will impact that agreement with the county. And we have had some initial conversations about what that might look like with county staff. But a larger conversation is is anticipated and that work will will have to get underway. Again, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions about that. I think Jasmine's here on the call, too, so she might be able to answer questions as well. Okay. All right, so those were the expenditure increases that we're recommending. Now we'll talk a little bit about the budget adjustment process. So as we have discussed, funding for these expenses was not specifically included in our 2021 adopted budget. So a budget adjustment would be required. If the expenditure increases are approved, the costs, any costs that were not able to offset with reductions in other areas would use prior year fund balance to to cover those those increased expenditures for 2021. Again, tonight, we're asking you all to approve, including these increases in expenditures. But you will, if you do approve them, you would see them again then when we bring back the quarterly of the budget adjustment. So think of this similar to how we've tried to work with the CIP, where we have projects as they come for you that say they would require an amendment to the CIP. This is similar to that. So you'll give the authorization to staff, we hope, tonight. And then you'll again see that when you see that quarterly budget adjustment. I did want to point out that a formal budget amendment, which comes with a hearing and notice, would be necessary in the event that we don't have sufficient budget authority. So just as you recall back to when we adopt our budget, there is a maximum level of expenditures, and that's the maximum level of expenditure authority that you have, that we have to spend in these various funds. Because prior year fund balance makes up some of that, we don't anticipate a formal budget amendment necessarily, but we did want to make you all aware that 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 could be a possibility. These commitment-related expenses are all administrative service functions. And as we talked, we created our administrative services fund to give us the ability to allocate the costs across our city operating funds. So as we talk about the budget adjustment, we'll in, we'll change, we'll need to adjust expenditure levels in that administrative services fund. But then we'll also have the budget adjustments to those operating funds. So this table shows the expenditure increases by operating fund for the positions that we've talked about so far related to the commitments, the positions and resources, excuse me. Again, I'll pause there if anyone has questions. This table shows.
Excuse me, Casey, this is Commissioner Larson, I apologize. I just wanted to, I did want to ask a question and I'm sorry I didn't catch it too soon. The, in the memo, you've got a spreadsheet that shows the basically the anticipated net increase that would occur based on that last slide you showed with the the cost of the requested increase. And I noticed that on that spreadsheet that the anticipated net increase was was different than what you were showing on the on the slide. I don't know if you can bring that back up. Yeah. Yeah, so you're like in the general fund, you're looking at 879,000. But in in your memo, it indicates the actual net increase anticipated is only $500,000 for that. Because there's going to be some expenditure. because there's going to be some expenditure offsets. Could you explain what those are?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager. I think I was just about to scroll down to.
Okay, never mind, never mind.
Does this look like?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. So yes, we do anticipate some offsets to those expenses, and there are several. We went back and looked at actual expenditures compared to budget, and we have for, over the average of the past few years, haven't spent 100% of our budget. So we do anticipate that through, through the course of 2021, if it's anything like our recent years, there will be savings in any number of different line items. And rather than articulate what some of those are, you know, they're 20 here, 10 there, those kinds of adjustments, we do think that there would be sufficient savings to cover what we're proposing. But we wanted to be conservative, because we did budget a little differently for 2021. And so because of COVID, there was a lot of uncertainty. We don't know what 2021 will look like compared to 2020. And so we wanted to be conservative. So we didn't want to just say, oh, we're sure it's all going to come out in the wash, and our typical savings will cover this adjustment. But we do think there is, that there is some of that. Some of the other items that we have identified are related to these investments themselves, as we talked about the purchasing positions that can focus on more competitive bidding. We do anticipate some savings related to that in our commodities and capital outlay purchases. Hiring an additional attorney in-house, we anticipate some offset there. Expenses that we're currently paying to counsel that's outside, outside legal counsel, we do anticipate some savings by bringing that back in-house. I think also, we, as we've kind of alluded to, as we are able to stabilize these critical functions and we're able to bring more tasks back into the administrative support functions, it may be possible to, as other administrative positions open up, to have that attrition conversation. So again, those positions are occupied now, so we didn't want to identify any of them. But there may be a position as a vacancy occurs where it is appropriate to have that conversation. So there may be some salary savings related to our ability to not fill vacancies as they arise. I just recognize they're vacuuming up here, so I don't know if you all can still hear me, but I'll try to speak up a little bit more in case that sound is distracting. I'll pause there. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, thank you very much, Casey.
This is Commissioner Ananda. Casey, also, part of these might be offset by the fact that it's March. And so, given that many of these folks are already employed with the city or would be changing positions or adding to positions, but for those, I mean, there's an entire hiring process that we need to occur that would presumably take to the end of March at the very least, even if we approve these tonight. So that would be nearly a quarter of those expenses, presumably around 400,000 potentially, which would greatly decrease that net increase that we're seeing. Is that, is that fair to say?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager. I think it is fair to say. I think, you know, as I tried to point out earlier, we do know that we won't be able to hire everybody tomorrow. So yes, the, the cost that we've shown is an annualized cost. So yes, I do think it's fair that we'll have some savings. But again, the rationale from behind, behind showing you the total cost was come 2022, we won't have that ability to say, sorry, we're only going to pay you for nine months of 2022. So wanted to be transparent with that, the full impact of that cost going forward. Also, as we continue to reprioritize in 2021 and start to build our 2022 budget, we need to be able to build, build those in or incorporate those into, if approved, into our 2022 budget. And so we need to be doing that with the full cost of those positions, not just, as I like to say, solve the math problem for 2021.
This is Commissioner Ananda. Thank you, Casey. I think that another, another piece of that, and you kind of touched on that here as well. You know, you said if you approve this for future years, and I don't, I want to make sure that this isn't like a trial position that we're looking at, but something that someone could apply for and see as, you know, not something that could potentially go away December 31st, 2021, or that the commission has to approve. That's, that's correct, right?
Assistant City Manager Casey Toomey, that's correct. These would be positions that would become part of our organization permanently.
Commissioner Ananda, thank you, Casey.
Assistant City Manager Casey Toomey. Any other questions before we move forward? Okay, we'll go back to. Sorry for the jumping around of the sharing of the screen. So as we discussed, did I? Sorry, I lost my own track of my place. So as we discussed, fund balance is probably, could be, I shouldn't say is probably, could be a funding source in 2021 if we're not able to reduce expenditures. And as I mentioned, these expenditures will become part then of our 2022 budget conversation. So that work is getting underway, and departments will be looking at all of their expenditure priorities. And we're having conversations right now about how do we ensure that the budget that we put, we recommend to you all for 2022 aligns with that strategic plan. And so these will become part of that conversation as we prioritize for 2022 and beyond. So our action again that we're requesting tonight would be to have you all approve, including in our next quarterly budget adjustment to the 2021 budget, expenditure increases totaling 1,790, excuse me, $1,379,000. Again, this table shows the adjustments needed to the operating funds. And then a similar, that dollar amount there shown for the total would also be needed in the administrative services fund. Another piece of that action again, just to remind you, is to approve revisions to that list of authorized position to increase it by nine and a half FTEs related to these commitments, and they're here shown on this table and summarized. So that is the end of the option that is focused on our commitment areas. Now we'll move into discussion of the alternative option related to strong and welcoming neighborhoods.
Excuse me, Commissioner Larson. Casey, I had a question before we get into this next one. Do, does anybody have any idea as to what are, what percentage of our administrative budget, how that compares to our overall budget, what percent that is?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager. Could you ask the question again, Commissioner Larson?
Sure, I don't, I didn't work very well, I apologize. So what percentage of our budget is dedicated to administrative endeavors, including this increases 1.3 million dollar increase? What percentage of our budget is dedicated to administrative duties?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I, I think Jeremy and Danielle and I could, could probably get that for you. I'll pause and see if Jeremy or Danielle wants to chime in if they have any sense of what that might be.
This is Danielle Bush, Cutter Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator. I don't have that number up hand either, Casey, but it's something that once you are done talking about the next element, I think we could have that number ready to go.
Sure, I appreciate that very much. I'd just, I'd like just to get a better idea how much of the budget is being spent on administrative support services, and is that number getting too high? Generally, in business, there's a certain percentage you look at before you kind of get a little bit too heavy in some areas. So that's why I'm curious about that number.
Vice Mayor Shipley, I kind of think this, there was an email that you all sent us today that kind of showed a cost. Whether they're exactly piercings, I don't know, but I found some of that to be kind of helpful. Kind of gave me perspective about what other people were doing, at least in these areas. Are you able to show us that little chart?
Casey Toomey, Assistant City Manager. This is the chart, I believe, Vice Mayor Shipley that you're referring to. See if I can blow it up a little bit. And it doesn't specifically talk about costs. What talks about is growth positions. Right. Is that the chart you had in mind?
Yes, thank you. I still, I, I, a member of the public had asked me something very similar to this, and I thought it does still give us perspective. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Larson that we want to make sure we're not going overboard. So this kind of gave me, it's not a percentage that she's asking for, but it did, you know, kind of tell me that we weren't out of line, way out of line. I just, I found it kind of to be helpful.
Assistant City Manager Casey Toomey, I, I think I see where you're coming from. And, you know, I, I would say that I sort of too, knowing that personnel is such a large part of our budget, I sort of, I agree, it's not a dollar for dollar, but I think I kind of too had that same. I think you can, you can kind of, you can kind of assume that if it's only 4.1% of our total FTE count, the amount of money that we're spending is probably certainly not 96%, I'll put it like that. But again, Danielle's probably calculating. Maybe I've stalled long enough for her to be able to have that calculated.
Jeremy Wilmer, Finance Director. So if we take our budget at a very high level, the budget is $355.7 million. The Administrative Services Fund and the Risk Management Fund are, are two internal services funds combined is 18.4 million. So if you take just those two funds divided by the budget, it's 5.17%.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. I was thinking it might be in that range.
Assistant City Manager Casey Toomey, are we ready to move on? I wanted to check. I see some puzzled expressions, so I wanted to make sure everyone was okay before we moved on. Okay, I think this might be the home stretch now to walk through the alternative options. So back in November, the city commission asked what it would take to increase capacity in the Planning Division of our Planning and Development Services Department. And while strategies have yet to be identified, we did want to let you all know that this priority of the commission could be included in our recommendation tonight in order to provide some additional capacity to meet our current demand, but also to better position the Planning Division to start work on completing or updating more neighborhood plans. Staff is recommending the following resources. Currently, there is a planning aid position that is not a permanent position in our city budget. So staff is recommending converting that planning aid to a planning technician. Again, there's no net cost associated with this. There have been some other personnel changes recently in that division, and so those salary savings can cover the difference for converting that position. But because planning, this planning technician was an FTE that wasn't included in our list of authorized positions, we did want to include that here and have you all authorize making that increase. Next is a planner. I have to watch my numbers here. One planner, two position, that again is to provide capacity to just meet current demand. It didn't include it in our big staff report, but the division did some analysis of the workload and, and was able to calculate that there, I think it's 120% of capacity of their current staff levels. So this additional planner two position would help meet existing demand. And then two planner one positions would, would be the two positions that could help get at additional neighborhood plans, and then also provide support as we talk about code revisions that I know the city commission is interested in pursuing. So likely that consulting services would still be needed to undertake large-scale code revisions. But with, even with consultants to do that work, there would need to be some increased in-house capacity to support the work of those consultants. So Jeff, I know, is on this call, and maybe I'll pause there and see if folks have questions for Jeff or for me. Nope, okay. Sorry for the stopping of the screen share. The fiscal impact of this option would be a net, an additional net increase of $211,000. These are not administrative function positions, so these costs would all be paid out of the city's general fund. So if we add those to the expenditure increases that we've previously talked about, the, this option would be an alternative action of including in the quarterly budget adjustment, expenditure increases totaling $1,590,000. And the table here shows the impact to the various city funds that would need to be adjusted. Similarly, this alternative action includes a request to approve increasing the list of authorized positions by 13 and a half FTEs. Makes me realize I'm on my almost last slide, and I don't know that I ever explained an FTE is a full-time equivalent position that's equal to one FTE equals 2080 hours. So did want to point that out. The slide also shows the 13.5 FTEs that would be included in this alternative action. You'll see there down at the bottom, in addition to the positions we've previously talked about, the planning technician, the planner two, and the two planner ones. So this slide is just a summary of those options. Again, what the option related to the commitments is expenditure increases totaling 1.379 million dollars of expenditures and an increase of 9.5 FTEs. The other option is an increase of 1.59 million and 13.5 FTEs. And that is the end of the presentation. So again, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, and I know our department directors are happy to as well. Craig may have more to add to the conversation. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if I may, as City Manager Craig Owens, I just want to cap off the presentation that Casey did, and I really appreciate the detail that she went through. These are tough dollars to spend, which is why largely they haven't been spent over the course of our growth in this. over the course of our growth in this, in this organization and trying to do things. It is, but it is allocation of resources prepare us for what we've committed to doing. And so if we weren't committed to doing the commitments, if we weren't committing to doing our work the way that we've said we were going to do, then this might be something that I have a little more trepidation about talking about. But to me, it is very clear that if we're going to go to another level, we absolutely need to have these basic resources in place. And as I said at the start, I believe that we need to have many of these resources in place just to do what we've already said or we thought we were doing. And I want to elevate something Casey said, I think was actually on my talking points list and she covered for me in the presentation. I do want to highlight and emphasize that the existing work that's being done here, while we're saying it's not quite what we would like to have done or rely upon, the people doing the work are exceptional. Doing more with less for many, many years and keeping us going for many, many years through their dedication and their talent and, you know, evenings, weekends, time and time again. And so I also want to represent that while you're going to hear in the KPIs and we talk about the strategic plan and the outcomes, you're going to hear about engaged and empowered teams that are doing the work out there to serve the residents directly. And this is our chance to talk about the engaged and empowered teams that have been doing the behind-the-scenes work or trying their very best to do the behind-the-scenes work at the level that has been demanded of them over the years. And so I think it's worth emphasizing again what Casey brought up in there and that this is not a criticism. This is a recognition that working in those conditions and having not missing, missing the marks that you know you need to hit is a very frustrating way to work and we don't want to be that way. And we certainly don't want to expect that we're going to go to a whole new level in that kind of an environment. So this is an opportunity for us to set that right. It's not the granite countertops. It's not kind of the fun and exciting stuff that we get to talk about a lot. But this is a capacity issue and this is a commitment issue that I'm proud to bring before you for consideration. And I appreciate the invitation also to look at things this way as we begin our journey. The other thing that I will just note in the feature is this, I believe this framework that we built is already starting to find, to bear fruit for us as an organization and for what we're doing at the taxpayers. Because this conversation, putting the commitments on the table and really thinking about what we meant by those and what you meant by those and what the community meant by those, it forced us to address realities of our own capacity and can we do this? And asking those questions and asking these departments to confront these realities and quantify these realities and talk about things in a realistic way. And so I think this framework is already starting to work for us to kind of get us prepared to be everything that we've been asked to be. So with those, I'll leave it to you all and I appreciate again your time and invitation for us to prepare this.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, Craig, Casey, and everyone for putting this together. Questions? Commissioners, overall, we've had several chances to ask, but any questions here before we open it up to public comment?
Commissioner Larson, I have one to go back just a little bit. I seem to be behind in a lot of this. I apologize. Go back to the planner positions. There's two planner 1s and one planner 2. Are any of those positions going to be dedicated to working on those neighborhood plans that we had discussed a few months ago?
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director, could you be happy to answer your question? We think that would just give us the capacity to really start going on those plans. They might not be solely dedicated to those kind of efforts, but it would give us a chance to get enough staff available to make good progress on those fronts. So we do expect, you know, with that kind of addition to hopefully take on at least one to two plans a year and get that ball moving forward.
Commissioner Larson, are you talking about the neighborhood plans or other types of land use plans?
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services, the neighborhood plans and the other land use plans. In the context of Plan 2040, neighborhood planning and sector plans got combined into one column. So we would look at both of them in the same, but we think that would give us the capacity to make headway on those efforts.
Commissioner Larson, thank you.
Mayor Finkel, are there other questions before I open it up? Seeing none at the moment, we'll go ahead and open this to public comment. If you'd like to make public comment, you can raise your hand using the raise your hand feature or turn your camera on and give a wave and Sherry will call upon you as we get through public comment.
Michael Davidson, please unmute, state your name. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Michael Davidson, Explore Lawrence. I do also want to echo the comments of Craig and the staff. It is a phenomenal staff. My interactions with the staff for the last five years has always been professionalism. There has been obviously some strain on getting things done as staff were pulled in various directions. But I really want to talk to you about the guest tax fund. And you know, I've been concerned that the Internal Service Fund pulls money out of the transient guest tax to support it. It was budgeted $136,000 for 2020, which was a 278% increase over the 2020 budget. Now you're asking to add an additional $9,000 to that. To give me an idea, what it takes just to put that $145,000 into that fund it means hotels need to generate $2.4 million in sales. In January of 2021, we generated less than $1.1 million in hotel revenue. And that was down from over $1.8 million in 2020. This fund is a challenging fund. I'm going to share a screen with you if I can, just to show you. Says that the host disabled the sharing screen. So that could be, well, looks like I'm not going to be able to share my screen.
Michael, try again.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So this is everything that is funded out of the transient guest tax fund for the 2021 budget. Explore Lawrence is the largest source of revenue for this, but it goes down to debt service and internal service and everything down. So there's a lot of things come out of this fund. Recently, the city sent out notes to the transient guest tax grant recipients that they were approved, but also that their funds were not guaranteed. They were going to be tied if revenue was generated. So there's a lot of pressure on this fund. This $9,000 is going to put more pressure on it, but what I really want to say is that I don't think the transient guest tax fund should support the Internal Service Fund at all because we're not really a part of the city, but we're not really part of the city and we don't take advantage of planning and accounting and all these kinds of services that the city provides. So my big ask is that this $9,000 is just going to jeopardize other funding or other parts of it, not only Explore Lawrence, but everything down to downtown Lawrence, Inc., to the Cultural Arts Commission, even to the holiday lights. So that is my concern that you don't take more money under the transient guest act to support these efforts. Thank you.
Cat Ostile, please unmute, state your name. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I was just hoping that someplace in this budget and all the money you're spending and the savings that you're doing, that somewhere there's something in here that ensures that the unrepresented employees will get the 2.5% general wage adjustment that they're due this year and not have it cut to a half a percent like it seems to have been done last year. I would ask that you fund the merit raise too, but if we get the 2.5% general wage adjustment, I know you wouldn't do that. So I'm not going to bother to ask, but please, for the unrepresented employees, the ones out here that got no hazard pay for being out here during the pandemic, doing all the work that it takes to keep the city running, like you say in all the letters you send us, how much we're appreciated. Be nice if we could get something for general wage adjustment inflation. We haven't had a merit raise over three years. So please, just the general wage adjustment. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Chris Flowers, please unmute, state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. I sent in some comments about this. I'll just kind of state some of what it's about. Earlier, like back in September, I asked about 24-hour animal control or, you know, just extending the hours of animal control. And I thought that would be looked at at some point. So I'm just wondering like, and also there's the whole police review going on. Like if they recommend that we have like mental health specialists, are we not going to have the money because we spent it on these positions? Because I just don't want the situation where we have recommendations for like meaningful police reform and like getting mental health specialists, but then we don't have the money and then it becomes, well, we can have these, but we're going to have to raise the taxes. So I think we should be delaying until we know more about what we're going to need with that, with the police. And also I would like to say, what about the homeless? Like, aren't you guys going to be having a meeting with county? Like, I'm just wondering if at all you guys can discuss more funding for the homeless shelter? Because a couple summers ago, it was, I think it was, they didn't have enough people to like enough staff at the shelter to have enough people in it. So I'd like to have talks about funding more staff at the shelter. And if we're going to be talking about that, I'd like for all of it to be discussed at once and not have this stuff go through now and then it'd be harder to get some of these other positions that we're going to be looking at in just a few months. So that's kind of my concern. And also, when it comes to like city, like community engagement, I think the problem is that sometimes it's just staff knows that the public isn't going to want what they want, but it's like for them, the community engagement is just mandatory BS they have to sit through before they push through what they want anyway. So I don't, I'm skeptical about that position bringing about better community engagement. I think it'll just be more of what we already have and what we already have isn't that good. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this side? Mayor, there's no more comment on this side.
Mayor Finkel, I, okay, bring it back to the commission. Just real quick, does anyone need to take a break before we have this discussion move on without? Been going about two hours, just wanted to be sure. Would you like to take a break? Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll come back with discussion to move on with the, after that 10-minute break. Thank you. Come back.
I think that we did it.
We're ready, mayor.
Mayor Finkel, thank you, Podo. We're back from our recess. I'll take a quick roll call. Vice Mayor Shipley.
Here.
Commissioner Nanda.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Bulley. Mayor Finkel, I am here as well, and we are at the point where we're having commission discussion and eventually a vote on this. So I'll open it up to the commissioners for questions or comments. And I'll maybe go ahead and start, because I do think it's somewhat confusing, especially to the public, and maybe even a little bit to me, but mainly to the public. Can Casey or Greg or Jeremy, can you talk a little bit about what we're doing here with the, with the budget amendment compared to what we're about to do in a, really a couple of months? To start talking about the 22 budget and about priorities going forward and how those two relate and how they're overlapping. I know this is not what we normally do because of COVID, but maybe a little explanation there would be helpful.
This is Assistant City Manager Casey Tumi Allstar, and then turn it over to Jeremy. But when we adopted the budget last August, we knew that because we were adopting the budget before the strategic plan, that there would be adjustments that we would need to make to align resources with what we ended up with in our strategic plan. So since the budget got adopted, we finalized that strategic plan, the outcome and commitments, and started looking at our 2021 budget and how we could align those, start to align those expenditures better. The, the needs that we've talked about tonight came up, as Craig said, when we, we realized that we need some basic capacity increase in order to provide the services that we, we are already saying that we're providing, but also to lay the foundation to really start to work towards those outcomes outlined in that strategic planning framework. So the, the quarterly budget adjustment process was anticipated. It wasn't fully designed at that time back in August, but we did, we did anticipate a process where we would bring you a quarterly adjustment that would increase some expenditures and maybe have decreases in other areas. And so this is simply that, that, that second one of those adjustments. And then, like I said, similar to our CIP conversations, as projects come up through our CIP, capital improvement planning conversations, projects come up that need to be adjusted, and those projects will say, in order to do this project, an amendment to the CIP will be needed. This is similar to that. We're saying in order to get these resources now immediately, we need you all to authorize that. And then when that next quarterly budget adjustment comes, it will have the, the official accounting of that, if maybe that's the way of thinking about it. So that's, that's what we're talking about tonight. And then, as we have talked, many of these, these resources are ongoing positions. And so as we build our budget for the 2022 calendar year that you all will be considering over the summer of this year and adopting in August of this year, we'll need to incorporate these expenditures if you approve them. If into that 2022 recommended budget that we'll, we'll bring to you this summer. I, that's where I'll stop and see if Jeremy has anything to add.
Jeremy Wilman, Finance Director, I really don't, you covered it well. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, I maybe, I'll just ask a couple clarifying questions. I, I think I understand this, but for example, we passed a budget in last July or August for 2021. Absent a budget amendment, all of the things we passed before stay, stay in effect. Pay raises, activities, all that. None of that changes unless we make a budget amendment.
Jeremy Wilman, Finance Director, that is correct.
And I don't even think we could if we wanted to, but nothing changes to the 2021 tax structure. We cannot, we're not making that change, no good, we really at this point.
Jeremy Wilman, Finance Director, under Kansas state law, once the levy has been set and established for the year, it cannot be changed.
Thank you, Mayor Finkel, and as we start to build out 2022 budget, for example, if we wanted to spend more money on the homeless in our 22, 2022 budget, on the mental health team, one will, we'll actually start having those conversations here in June and July and approve that in August to start in January of 2022, and those discussions are gonna be ongoing, correct?
Jeremy Wilman, Finance Director, that is also correct.
And then finally, I would make the clarifying question, Mayor Finkel, if we did want to start something that's, say, in September of 2021 on some particular project, we would do that through another budget amendment, and we could do that, but it'd have to be through the same similar process, correct?
Jeremy Wilman, Finance Director, yes, the quarterly budget adjustment would be that process. And as you had indicated earlier, we could not raise taxes if some other revenue string that was not tax-based was identified. You know, that could be added to the budget at that time if necessary.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Took me a little while to figure that all out, so I thought it might help to put that out there for everyone as well. Other comments, questions?
This is Commissioner Nanda, and I think that I would just comment, you know, being one of the, one of the few people here, I think, who are on the commission, who actually are one of these administrators that we're talking about. I've never met an HR department that says, I am sufficiently staffed to do everything that everyone thinks I do or wants me to do. And in fact, generally, they are grossly understaffed. And while they are, what I would hope would be the purveyors of health and well-balanced work ethic for our entire systems, they are generally overworked and overstressed. And certainly, when they are experiencing sufficient staffing, they can, they can breathe a little bit and be able to do all of these things that, that we're asking them to do through our strategic planning in particular. So not only are we addressing our strategic plan by hiring those folks, we're able to do the actions that we're asking them to do. And I think that, you know, particularly large bureaucratic organizations, academia is where I am, certainly the city, tend to oscillate between centralization and decentralization and specialization and expertise and cross-training. And I think that as we have a movement toward better mental health, not only for our employees, but our ability to be an organization that moves forward with a single vision, exactly what we're doing right now. I mean, I think, I think even Craig and QC mentioned, this is just getting us to where we can function. It's not even moving us toward those other things. So if this is a small first step, I acknowledge the budgetary piece of this that is a painful pill to swallow, given the year that we've had. But also the necessity for particularly HR, just because that's my experience, to be able to provide services to our staff effectively. So that's kind of where I'm sitting at the moment on this one, and I really appreciate all the thoughtfulness the staff has put into this, particularly moving us forward with our strategic plan.
Commissioner Larson, I did have another question. Majority of this money, if it's approved, would be, would come from the general fund. Can you, can somebody tell me where that leaves us with our, with our general fund, fund balance, anyway, I should say?
Assistant City Manager Casey Tumi, I see Jeremy's, looks like he's pulling something up on the computer. I was gonna also try to go back up to the slide that had the general fund, that increase. It, it shows a general fund anticipated impact for the commitments, positions and resources that we're talking about of $879,000. Again, that's an annualized cost, as Commissioner Nanda pointed out, that will be offset by not hiring all of those positions for a full year in 2021. And some of those other offsets that we talked about. So if I scroll back up to that chart, we think that we can conservatively, if we conservatively talk about those offsets, we think we're talking about a net increase to the general fund of half a million dollars.
Jeremy, Finance Director, when you all adopted the budget, you had a placeholder of fund balance of 20.7 million. If you were to approve this action tonight and the anticipated $500,000 came to fruition, that would be then 20.2 million instead of 20.7. And so instead of a 22% fund balance, we would have a 21% fund balance.
Commissioner Larson, thank you very much. Commissioner Larson, I guess I'll just kind of pipe in here a little bit, my thoughts. There's no doubt in my mind as to the need for, for these positions. We've been struggling for years talking about community engagement and the lack thereof, any sort of organization, organized process for that. And so I would, you know, the position that's being proposed, I think, would be a good one to add. Also, on the planning side, it, I'm a little concerned about those positions. Definitely had asked, we had definitely asked last fall about the capacity issue with them. And my particular interest was on the neighborhood plans. And the proposal is to add, I think, three positions, but I'm not sure if I got a really clear idea or a statement from Jeff that the, at least one of these positions would be dedicated to working on those neighborhood plans. So I'm a little concerned about that. But, but overall, I know we've got structural issues, and this is basically the administrative part of our organization. This is basically our foundation as to making sure we have the support to, to operate our entire city operations. So it's important that we make sure these are strong, the structural aspect of our, our organization is strong. And this is what this goes to. We've been suffering on this for quite some time. And a, a good example is on our auditing that we've, issues that we've had for the past two years. We've struggled with that just because of, again, that structure just is not there to support the needs. We need to make sure that audit is, comes out in the best way that it can. And so we need those positions to ensure that, you know, the finance aspect of our, of our organization is, is properly run and we can, and, and for the community as a whole. So, you know, in general, I'm in support of, of this proposal. I'm very concerned about the idea that future funding for it be potentially from property taxes. I'm not interested in that at all. I think we need to find those continuing dollars from efficiencies found by adding these positions as well as centralizing some of our operations. So going forward to fund this, I would look for those types of ways to fund it and not raising property taxes. I'm not interested at all in raising property taxes.
This is Commissioner Bulley. You know, we just heard that our critical functions are at risk, and I'm, I share that concern, and you know, I'll just kind of echo my fellow commissioners on the auditing. It's so important that we have our finance operations just supported and capable. So get new software before we can, you know, get the whole thing taken care of. But we've got to make sure that we continue to make progress on this. And, you know, making these adjustments is an important part of that. You know, with regard to the human resources, I mean, we have wonderful employees. We have responsibilities to them as an employer. We make sure that they're gonna get paid accurately and, and on time. And, you know, if these are the critical functions that are at risk, we need to do this stuff. And I would just like to, you know, remember that, you know, Commissioner Matthew Herbert talked often and well about the need to improve our communication. And, you know, this has been an ongoing topic for a long time. I'm glad to see that we have a proposal that, you know, if we provide the resources and management provides the skill, we can maybe make some progress on this.
Vice Mayor Shipley, maybe I'd like to just clarify something with Jeff, because I, I agree with Commissioner Larson. I've, I felt like I heard Jeff Crook say, with this change, he would anticipate two area plans, sector plans, neighborhood plans, whatever falls in that category to be rolling every year. Or just straight out of the gate, I want to make sure I heard him correctly. Or just straight out of the gate, I want to make sure I heard him correctly on that.
Jeff Craig, Plankton Development Services Vice Mayor, that's correct. We think we, with the added staff, that would free up enough capacity throughout the division to let us take on one to two sector plans a year. Because right now, staff is working about 21% over capacity. So just trying to keep up with site plans and the applications that are coming in consumes a large portion of it. We think this will give us enough breathing room, if you will, to let a lot of staff come on board. And there's going to be a lot of staff have the time to come on board and look at those area plans, the sector plans, the neighborhood plans, and let us really make some good progress in those efforts.
Vice Mayor Shipley, thank you. Yeah, I, 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 I support this. I, we've, we've discussed it together before, and I, I think we've prioritized it. So I, I'm actually very glad that they have shown us something that they think is going to advance neighborhood plan. Not just because it's part of our strategic plan, but because we've been asked consistently for several years about how we can help the neighborhoods. And, and it's our job to be responsive. Maybe it's a coincidence, maybe it's not that it's part of our strategic plan. But I think, you know, asking us for a number of years to be responsive to their needs, it's time to get it done. As, you know, as far as the rest of the requests, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I, I feel like we're really just getting ourselves back to where we should be. And, and maybe moving us towards proactivity, which sounds like not a space that every department has been in. So I, I do support this.
Mayor Finkel, I talk about first the, talk about them in two different segments. But first, the, you know, changes to the critical functions, as it was called. I mean, I think of this in two ways, and, and I do support it for two reasons. One is, you know, we've talked about this strategic plan and the commitments we've made. And, you know, I've, I've said before, sometimes you have strategic plans that just kind of sit on the shelf and don't really mean anything to anyone except a lot of fancy words. And other times, you have strategic plans that fundamentally change an organization and how it operates. And, you know, I want to, you know, commend Craig as our city manager, whose job it is to run this organization, to come with us and work with us to create this strategic plan. But to come up with these commitments and then to say, not only are these just pretty words on a page, but these are words that are going to fundamentally change the way we provide services. And then to go and say, okay, we've now committed to do that. How are we going to make that happen? And what do we need to make that happen? And, and then, then he brings forward his plan. And as a city manager, former government, I trust my city manager on what he says he needs to, to fulfill the commitments we've made. And, and I think we have the resources to do that. Yes, it's painful. Yes, it's money. But we've made these commitments now, and, and these are the resources that we need to make it happen. And then I think, you know, we hold, hold folks accountable to that. But I think this also shows that we're committed to it. We are, as the city commission, and as a city, putting the money behind this strategic plan to say, these are the commitments we want to make and we're willing to pay for that. And to me, that's a very important message to the community about the importance of this strategic plan and our attempts going forward to fulfill those commitments. And so I appreciate this being brought forward in this way and as a commitment to that strategic plan. And as we think about the commitments versus the outcomes, you know, city commissions will change and outcomes might change, but the commitment of our employees to provide those services, really, and how they provide those services will never really change. What, you know, that we provided accurately, that we provided well, that we communicated well, that we support our employees, those are going to be the same no matter what. So we have to get that right first. And if we can get that right, then we can go out and make progress on those outcomes. And so I appreciate this effort. Some people would say, you know, hey, let's focus on the pretty outcomes first. And then maybe we'll deal with the commitments later when we can. You know, I appreciate what Craig has brought forward to say, no, we have our commitments to make to deliver that. Now we can go perform our outcomes. And so to me, that is the right approach, and I support that. And even if that means when we get to our next budget, we can't do all the outcomes that we want and balance everything. I still think we're in a much better position because we have strengthened that core and had those commitments. So I, I very much appreciate that end of it. Turning a second to the planning side of it, you know, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the County Commission the other day. And, you know, I think it's not only us that is saying, our staff, we need some more help in the planning department. But the Planning Commission said that, and the County Commission said that. And it is a jointly funded staff. And again, we have Plan 2040, and we have neighborhood plans. And we said, this is what we want our community to look, look like. And we spent a lot of time and effort to say, Plan 2040 is what we want to do. And now we have to get around to implementing it. And if it's just a bunch of pretty words, just like I said before, but a bunch of pretty words and a plan somewhere that we're not going to implement, we're not doing anyone any favor. So we have to put the resources there to implement it. And lastly, I would say, not only the, you know, working on some of the neighborhood plans, but we need to, you know, 121%, I think, is what the number was that Jeff said. When we have proposals coming through and they're slowed down because we don't have the staff to process them. We, we have all heard about complaints about, you know, things, how they're processed, how they're moving forward. We need, again, our commitment has to be to making those processes internally work right. And so I support that position as well, because I think we need to be able, I mean, when someone comes in with a proposal, be it for their house or be it for a new business, they need to be able to know that they can have be processed in a timely manner. So I certainly support that part of it too. Is it a lot of money? Yes. Do I think our budget can handle it? Yes. Do I look forward to the 2022 budget process and figuring out how that all works together and how we can get our outcomes? Yes, it's going to be difficult, but it's something we have to do. I will say, just caveat, you know, we don't know exactly what's going to happen with the new COVID relief bill going through the Senate. I mean, it's passed the House and went through the Senate. That could have a significant impact on the 2021 budget and future budgets. For those who don't know, the House Oversight Committee released what, the, the one portion of the bill, the $350 billion that's being fought over between the Republicans and Democrats. That $350 billion, the House Oversight Committee says, the Sea of Lawrence will get 19 million of that. The county will get 23 million. That does not include the homeless money, the COVID relief money, the other money, that the hospital money, the education money, that all might come through that plan if it passes. And if it doesn't change, don't know what will happen up there, but it's pretty clear something's going to happen. I think that's going to change. We'll be looking at some probably budget alternatives going forward. And those, being what happens up there, they might make a significant difference. But here we go, this, even if that fails, we get none of that money. I still think this is the right thing to do going forward. So I've talked too long. But anyway, that's my two cents. Other comments? Motions?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I am happy to make that motion. I just want to make sure that what I would be reading, rather than the $1,379,000, it would be what Casey had on the slide, $1,590,013.5 FTEs. Is that correct? Based on what I'm hearing.
Assistant City Manager Casey Toomey, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. This is Commissioner Nanda. I would move that we direct staff to include the quarterly budget adjustment and increase in 2021 expenditures totaling $1,590,000 and approve increasing the list of authorized position by 13.5 FTE positions. Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Nanda, second by Vice Mayor Shipley. Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your work on that. We look forward to moving, making progress on the commitments and making progress on our strategic plan and appreciate the efforts. We're now on to commission items. Any commissioners have any future agenda items, work session, or other items?
Vice Mayor Shipley, I did want to kind of bring something to everyone's attention in case they hadn't seen it. And it's Kansas Senate Bill 161. And I'm sorry, guys, it has to do with sidewalks, but believe me, it's, I'm not going to go crazy here. And it was in the Commerce Committee, I think it was on Friday. And it's about personal delivery devices. So as many of you may know, companies such as Amazon are branching out into robotics, and they'll be delivering your packages, not with trucks, but with robots. And this particular bill addresses allowing those devices on the sidewalks. I hope you guys go and take a look at it. It's, there's some interesting things there I think we should be concerned about. For one thing, the company that brought this forward had a weight limit for the device of 150 pounds, but no weight limit on the cargo. So I was concerned that, not knowing how much of a weight limit you might damage to the sidewalks, and homeowners would be, as we know, personally responsible for fixing them and might have a very hard time dealing with a company of that size. In addition, the insurance amount those companies are required to carry is only $100,000, which would certainly not cover if there was damage to a whole block of sidewalks. What else? I, I spoke very briefly with if, if we had concerns about this, to write them, if we wanted to write a letter together or if each of us, you know, personally had concerns, to write to our senators. I know we all know our senators. And I, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It, to me, it would be effectively making our sidewalks into a highway. Some of you may remember how much time we talked about just scooters, just scooters on our sidewalks. And this would be devices of, of probably a much larger scale. And I, I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to it.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. I'll take a look at that. Other commission items?
This is Commissioner Nanda, I guess, to kind of piggyback on that with, or to give us an opportunity to speak about that in an organized fashion with our legislators. The National League of Cities Conference is coming up. I don't know if other folks are attending. It's virtual, but they are scheduling meetings with our legislators, so that may be an opportunity. Are any other commissioners attending that?
Mayor Finkel, I've signed up and plan to attend quite a few sessions.
This is Commissioner Nanda. So if we, if we are going to attend those meetings with our legislators, perhaps that's a space in which we could bring that up. Acknowledging that's the national level, not the state level. But I think that that's probably going to be a national conversation at some point as well.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. There's no other commission items? Seeing none?
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager Craig Owens. There's a few reports on there. I make a note on the shelter update as well as the rather extensive policy on right-of-way management. But there are just a couple of updates on there that we think are a little more user-friendly. And other than that, we'd just be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor Finkel, Craig, or maybe if Derek's on, am I correct that we're planning to end the the winter shelter program next weekend?
That's correct. I was checking with staff, and the actual date is the morning, Saturday morning, March 6 will be the end. So roughly five more nights, balances before the night started was $45,000. And estimated a budget authority that the commission had authorized should be around $28,000 to $30,000 remaining.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that and all your work on that. Other questions about the city manager report? This is a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak about one of those five items on the city manager's report, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature.
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Mayor, there's no comment on this item.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, Sheri. That brings us to the calendar. Take a look at the calendar. Any comments, concerns on the calendar? Seeing none? Brings us to adjournment. There was such a motion.
Commissioner Larson, move to adjourn.
Commissioner Nanda, second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Commissioner Nanda. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley? Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone. See you next week.